Audiences only, so your mom is definitely invited. Sometimes controversial, always engaging. It's the podcast that lets your voice be heard. It's the podcast that shouts you out. It's time to holler. Can you dig it?
I could eat a unicorn one day through a pop tart.
I like.
That's for sure.
You like the Jizzie part?
Yeah, I like the way it explodes in my mouth and to swallow it down. Oh, my God.
Your tweets, snaps, Facebook comments, and even phone calls. Holler any way you want.
They used to give kids opiates to keep them quiet.
This is much less offensive than that.
JD, Brian, and Gracie, holler at your boys.
So there was a massive solar storm today, apparently, and if you're in the Appalachian region, I just want everybody to know that it's a very clear night and you might be able to actually see the aurora borealis. And that's cool as fuck.
It is Appalachian, not Appalatian.
Yes, yes, it's, if you say it wrong, I will throw an apple at you. That's how you, that's how you remember that. Welcome to Holler, ladies and gentlemen. We're chilling here. I'm JD. That's Brian. That's great. We have a really special guest with us and I'm really excited to talk about his Tennessee Sour Match Whiskey. Wait, what?
Wait, what?
Oh, it's not, it's not that Jack Daniels. It's this Jack Daniels from Huntington, West Virginia, current candidate for city council district nine. How are you doing, Jack?
I'm doing well. I'm glad to be on the show again. This is my second time appearing as a guest on Holler. I guess, well, I guess this is my first time when it's formed as Holler.
That's an interesting talking point, too, by the way, because like something that's like not thought about, dude, even though it feels like just yesterday to me, it's crazy. I can still picture us all sitting there having our drinks out of copper mugs. But it was so long ago, we were a different podcast name and we didn't even have Gracie yet. That's how long you were a guest.
So yeah, well, I'm happy to be back and the new format is awesome. I love it. I share the memes all the time. I've listened to several episodes. You guys are great. So thank you.
Thank you so much, man. That's awesome. We are also big fans of you, man. You are stepping into the public forum right now, man. You are running for Huntington City Council. This is within the city limits. District nine, which is the eastern side of the whole, the whole thing. It's a very interesting shaped district, but can you give us a little quick sort of stump speech or something real quick saying, hi, I'm Jack and this is what I'm running for and all that stuff?
Yeah, sure. I mean, I'm, my name's Jack Daniels. As you mentioned, I am running for city council district nine. District nine is the crossroads community Arlington Park, Guindot and Altizer neighborhoods. So if you live in those, any of those neighborhoods and plan on voting in the primary on Tuesday, which you should just remember that Jack's got your back. I'm a software engineer by profession, but I've, I've dedicated my career to problem solving. And I think that those types of skills are, you know, what our community needs. We, we have a lot of concerns in those neighborhoods, especially in Guindot and Altizer. I feel like the river kind of separates the neighborhoods and Route 60 is there and it's not like, there's a lot of really cool walkable stuff in Guindot and they have their own identity and history. Then just across the river where I live, it's very kind of difficult to, to interact without getting in your car, driving over there and having, you know, a reason to go across the river one way or the other. So I've been trying to spend a lot more time in Guindot. I've been, I've been running across the road. I've run across Route 60 several times this week. It's very unsafe. There's a lot of things that I think that we could address with public safety. From an infrastructure perspective. So, you know, I want to foster open communication, collaboration with the residents. I want to try to, to build some kind of, of accountability system for myself using my website. I want to build like a database of issues that people report. And so they can keep track of the status of those, like, and they can see if I drop the ball or if somewhere in this else in the city, it's held up, you know? And we have the three one one app and I love it. I use it and it's a great tool. But I think that I want to take it a step further to hold myself accountable and make additional transparency to my constituents and neighbors in district nine. So, you know, I think that there's a lot of stuff we can do to invest in small business growth, education, public services, et cetera, et cetera. And that's, that's really where I want to focus.
That sounds absolutely fantastic. I'm going to say that's the toast for today. So cheers to that. Everybody, Jack Daniels, city council district nine cheers.
Jack, you mentioned that three one one app for people that aren't privy to what you're talking about.
Yeah. So the city of Huntington has an, an app that they call Huntington three one one and it's through a system called C Click Fix. The app is kind of, it's, it's not super well optimized in my opinion, but you can, hey, homies in the chat.
Homies in the chat. What's up? Cheers, Dewey.
Ruby, Ryan, Connor, Ryan, uh, this fucking person, proto.
Normal, arigato, proto.
Hello, Sarah. So if you go to, if you could just go to like the app store or Google Play Store and if you type in Huntington three one one, actually the first app that comes up is called Huntington WV three one one. And then it's published by C Click Fix. That app, you can actually track and log any issue in the city. And the city does a really good.
We're talking like potholes, potholes, if your sidewalk's messed up for your house.
Yeah, but then people be snitching about high grass and weeds and stuff like.
That is true, too. It does happen.
But there's nothing we can do much, uh, Gracie, right? About trifling assholes, right?
Okay. There is bigger raptors that are going to be in high grass. Leave it be.
Yeah, but no, you're right. The three one one app is, is designed to let people report these kinds of things. And obviously ones that are higher priority are the ones that do include, you know, public safety as the main major issue. So that, that does make sense. I mean, like, for example, there was a sinkhole I saw developing. It's, there's a couple of them actually in town on like third and fifth avenues that I've used that app too to report those. I'm sure I'm not the first one to do it because I can't be the first one to see that sinkhole, but it's really cool to see that. Also, it looks like you just said in the chat, uh, uh, Jack, there's actually, if you go to cityofhuntington.com slash Huntington dash WV dash three one one, that'll take you to the app, too.
Yeah, it just takes you to the links to the store apps, but.
Speaking of sinkholes, JD, we've been, we're just five days past sinkhole de Mayo, so that would make sense that they're popping.
Stupid.
Yep. And six days past the Derby, the Kentucky Derby, which was a, which was a wonderful race.
Yeah, horses. That's right.
That was a great race.
It was very, very fun. So, uh, so Jack running for, uh, city council in Huntington, uh, district nine. Again, it was a reminder that, uh, Tuesday is, is the primary election day here in West Virginia. Um, so you're going to be voting, um, and by, by the way, uh, Jack, you're on the Democratic ticket, I believe. So if you show up.
If you're. Go ahead. If you're registered independent or unaffiliated, then you need to ask for a Democrat ticket. So they'll, they'll, if, sometimes I've had poll workers assume based on, I guess, the way that you look or what your registration is. So it, 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 sometimes you have to be specific with them. So that has happened before me. I'm not saying that like our poll workers are doing a great job. We've, we have a lot of really fantastic people that are doing that. So, uh, I kind of helped the, uh, the Democrats a little bit in Campbell County, put together, uh, some poll workers and stuff. So they, they've, they've done a good recruiting effort to get there. I've been trying to work with the Campbell County Democrats. Well, I was, I wasn't registered Democrat until fair, fairly recently. Um, and I changed to, uh, I registered as a Democrat so that I could get on the primary ballot for, uh, this election cycle. I figured that, uh, I would have a better shot having the support of a established party and their platform is most closely aligned with my values and my mission. But I, you know, I don't agree with every single thing that comes out of a, a single party. I think our party system is kind of.
Nor should you. That would be ridiculous if we, if we lived life, that would be absolutely absurd.
It's very unfortunate that that's how a lot of the stuff goes nowadays, but I think really it's, it's more unsaid. There's the, when we talk about the silent majority, it's really more people that, uh, they have, they don't, most people I don't think, uh, deal with identity politics and most people I don't think run on a single, single issue voters out there, but I don't think it's most people. I think everybody has different venue, opinions and values, and that's what makes America, uh, that is what makes America great.
Hey, Jack, this is a really great time since we're talking about voting. Uh, I can tell you, man, people have anxiety when it comes to voting and it will either stop them from going to the polls or they'll get to the polls and they'll fuck it up. So like, let's talk about just some very basic tips. Uh, and let's just use you as an example. We're going to go vote for you and maybe we're talking to a first time voter. Maybe a first time voter is seeing this video and they're seeing it because they're your buddy. They want to go vote for you. And maybe they just haven't like come out and said like, dude, I don't actually know how to vote because I haven't done it before ever. So, you know, here's like one tip that I've got and correct me if I'm wrong. Let's just say I only wanted to vote for you. That was the only reason I was even going to the polls that day. I have zero interest in anything else. I could literally just go to the polls and I could get to your section. I could punch your name and I could just literally skip through the rest and end it all. And it still counts as a vote for you, correct?
Correct. Uh, but I would say while I've got you here, if you plan on doing something like that, which I recommend, uh, at least doing a brief rundown, look at other candidates because there are some candidates that are running for some key positions in our local government that really need, uh, the support, particularly in the Campbell County Board of Education. Uh, I'm part of a, uh, community action group called No Parks, No Libraries, No Levy, uh, that we founded in response to the Campbell County Board of Education's, uh, defunding of the parks and library system, total defunding of the parks system and a massive cut to the library system. They have recently walked those numbers way back up as close as they can possibly get away with it and still have a convincing argument to vote for this levy. But, um, it's still not enough. The, the, the library system is going to be forced to take drastic measures, uh, to be able to, to operate on the budget that the board of education is proposing. It's completely unacceptable. Uh, and I believe that we need to mobilize at the polls to vote no on the levy, the board, the Campbell County Board of Education access levy just in May. And we only want to do this so that we can let the board know that a county without fully funded parks and libraries is an unacceptable prospect and we don't want that. That, that's it. We don't want, we don't want the, the, we don't want our education system to lose out on money. We want them to get the budget right and do it right in November. If you vote no now, they can, they still have the option to run this levy in November with a balanced budget. If, if they do not do that, that is the board of education's choice. They are the only entity with the power to do that. So, uh, we're, we're saying to vote no in May so that we have a chance to vote yes in November.
Exactly. What, that's an awesome way to say that. You just kind of put that entire awesome argument together in that last sentence. We are saying no in May so that we can have a chance to say yes in November. I love the way you phrase that. That is like the perfect way to explain what's going on. There's a lot of people who are confused about that and you did a great job running that down, man. That was super awesome. And you have been active, by the way, when I say active, this, this guy, Jack Daniels, has been on television, on the news. He's gone to these meetings. He has spoken directly with these people and, and they know him by name and face now. You know what I'm saying?
I'm on public record. I am on official public record in the board of education's minutes by name, mentioned by name. It says that, that I got up and called, I said somebody did a bad job or something like, I, I've, I've went to these meetings and spoken out so many times that I can't really remember what all I've said at this point. I have it all written down, but I am on the right side of history on public record. So whichever way the, the levy goes in May, I take, I wear it as a badge of honor. They were trying to make me look bad in the minutes when they published it, said that Jack Daniels was being belligerent and whatever, but hey, you're gonna make bad decisions and I'm gonna do what I can do to hold you accountable, you know?
Let me pause right here for people that may be seeing this for the first time. Obviously I've got an advantage. I've known you for years now and you know, you, you've been a great friend to me. Uh, but also dude, you're just, you are such a standup guy and I'm not just saying that because you're on our podcast. You're such a standup guy. You're so intelligent and you're intelligent in many different facets, too. And it kind of makes you a very interesting slash fascinating person, but you're someone that like all, in my opinion, you just have to meet you once, listen to you speak and it's like, oh, hey, I'm on this guy's side. I trust where he's going with this. You've never.
Got your back. That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say, man.
You've never once said or did anything that made me like think, oh, like, like Jack's a little bit off today or he's having like a, but you are just always, you, you have been rock solid since the day I've known you and it was, I've known you for over a decade now.
It's, it's got to, it's a part of it is.
Thank you.
You are a, you are a learned man because you have traveled. You've been around, not just around here, but around the world. Dewey actually is, is, is agreeing here. He says Dewey, Dewey says, I agree. Jack's very well rounded. It has in-depth knowledge about a lot of stuff. Jack's got your back. Where you have, when I say you've traveled a lot, not just around here, not just around the country, but around the world. Um, you're a jet setter, man. Where, where have you been in the past couple of years that you could tell us about? Uh, that, uh, you, that you went and traveled and so.
I went to the Hot Pocket Factory. No. I, uh, I've been several places in Europe, uh, and so, but my, I started a indie game development company in 2015 called Lasso Games and it was a, a very, very ambitious endeavor for, uh, me and a couple of folks to take on, but we've been doing that ever since. And we just in 2024 converted it into a worker co-op. So we're doing the, taking all the steps we have to do legally and structurally within the business to turn it into a worker owned thing. Um, and I'm struggling with that and I need some help from accounting stuff, but all that to, to answer your question, the reason I mentioned that is because in 2017, we were actually awarded a trip to Helsinki, Finland for the game development world championship for our title mini law ministry of law on Steam. Uh, and, uh, that was an awesome eye opening experience for me because it was, I'd never been, I'd been to Mexico before, like on a cruise, but I'd never really been like out of the country, out of the country, you know? And that was my first big trip. And, uh, yeah, so it was weird. I went to Helsinki. It's like in the Arctic Circle. I took a cruise from there over to Stockholm, Sweden and back. A few years later, I went to Amsterdam. And then when I was staying in Amsterdam, uh, in the Netherlands, I took a train to Antwerp, Belgium, then took a train from, uh, uh, into Dusseldorf, Germany. And then a few years after that, we flew into Frankfurt, Germany and ended up in Prague in the Czech Republic. And then we took a train from Prague to Vienna, uh, in Austria and back. So we've, we've seen several cities in Europe and, uh, learned a lot about their city design and some, some of the urban planning techniques that they've used in Europe where they have these, these old, old, old buildings that they have to preserve. And it's amazing to see how their cities are designed around preserving this character of this city that was, you know, built in the 1400s or something.
Right. And to connect, connect that awesome story of travel to, uh, your sort of candidacy for a council and seeing all these places, a major reason that you went, right, was kind of, you were looking at how these cities designed themselves. And I mean, for, for, in comparison to those cities and in someplace like Huntington, we're young, we're, we're in, we're in sort of influence, uh, compared to those kind of places. And would you say that that's kind of, um, kind of, uh, uh, you know, helped you kind of build your sort of outlook on what you could do with your city? If you ever, uh, got in that kind of position?
Yeah, I, I, well, I think that it, it's definitely informed my positions on a lot of things. Uh, as a city council member, you know, I'm not going to have a whole lot of power just myself, you know, I will be one vote on a council of many other votes and we'll, we're going to have to be in one accord. So the, the reason that I, you know, want to run for council is because I feel like I have an affinity for, like y'all said earlier, you know, reaching people and helping them to understand my perspective on things and, and also listening to my neighbors and helping to understand their perspective and possibly translate it to council in a way that, that it's going to garner empathy and support. But yeah, I mean, seeing, seeing those cities in Europe has really made me realize the kind of how weird our city, urban planning is in North America is just because of the history and, uh, because of our culture. And there's a lot of things that sort of keep us from being able to do the cool stuff they do in Europe.
Jack, when you were young, did you ever think in your life that you would be running for anything politically? Did you ever have this idea?
Heavens, no.
Yeah, I figured.
I, I didn't think, I, I never wanted to run for office or anything like that. Honestly, it hasn't been until just recently. It, it's just come from just doing local community activism stuff. I mean, trying to get neighbors to come together and, and repave our sidewalks, trying to get, uh, you know, more public green spaces, trying to raise awareness for what all the libraries and the parks do for our community. Trying to create more public spaces where there isn't an expectation for you to spend money, uh, or to have to go to work or something like that. So we just need those third spaces and, um, I, we need more advocates for those in council chambers and cities across.
I think I commented this like when you very first posted that you were running, but the fact that you're district nine, it happens to be my favorite district just because of the number, because
Yes, right?
The greatest chance to make the movie poster district nine, but with.
There's so many, there's so many sign opportunities. I could have the Tennessee whiskey logo twisted somehow for my name. I could have the district nine poster somehow worked out. This, I, it's my head spinning, but I've honestly waited until, I want to wait until after Tuesday to know, because you know, I could lose the primary. So.
Yeah, you gotta win. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta win and keep winning and keep going. Uh, well, Jack, man, that's so cool. Everybody who's interested, I know, just by the way, uh, just to remind everyone, uh, this is Holler. We are, we are recorded here in a beautiful, wild and wonderful Huntington, West Virginia. It's the birthplace of podcasts. Uh, it's America's best community. Uh, and, uh, it's where you can go and vote this Tuesday. Uh, I believe it's May 14th. Uh, yes, that's the date. Yeah, the 14th. Um, and, uh, for your primary, uh, election day. Um, but we are proudly powered by camo energy. You can go to camo dot energy and get some really great stuff. Camo energy, by the way, is, uh, uh, an fabulous. Uh, now I've got an old bottle design here, but Brian will show you, uh, one of the new ones, um, if he, if he, if he's got it. Um, but, um, definitely go check them out. Camo dot energy. It is 250 milligrams of caffeine, zero carbs, zero sugar. Barely, I don't think there's, I think it's, isn't it calories? There are no, yeah, no calories.
No calories, no sugar, no tropics. Uh, these things have it all. You're going to notice them with their chartreuse power up button on top. This is a shout out to all the gamers out there. They give you a power up button as the cap. Um, it's a really cool company and it's a company that started in Huntington. They've got their offices in Pittsburgh now, but they are a national company. They're in many different states. Um, but this is their, this is their hometown right here. So we are proudly powered by them. And like JD was saying, um, the two flavors that I showed you on the screen, rocket pop and blood orange. These are just two of many flavors they have. And as a matter of fact, if you're watching this right now, if you guys stick around, we're going to play some family feud, um, here in a bit, and we're going to give this stuff away for free. If you win family feud, you're going to win it for free, but I'm going to give you another way to win it right now. If you would share our live video that you're currently watching on Facebook, if you share this to your wall, we will send you a couple of flavors of camo for free 99. All you have to do is just DM us with your mailing address and we will ship it your way because we want you guys to try this stuff because it's so delicious. We want this to do the talking, not us.
Exactly. Camo dot energy. If you're more interested in, uh, finding out more about camo energy, we're proudly powered by them. They're fantastic. Another website you should definitely check out is jackforhuntington.com. It's all one word. You see it scrolling on the bottom of the video. If you're watching this, if you're checking this out on Spotify. Cool, man. Spotify. Sweet. What's up? Headphones. But also jackforhuntington.com. It's spelled like it sounds all one word. Uh, that's where you can learn more about Jack and his candidacy for, uh, district nine city council. Um, he's also got us a couple of links where you can find your polling place, uh, as well as check out a sample ballot for your precinct and district. Um, we'll get you more information about that. We'll include all that actually in the info on this episode when it goes up, uh, after it's gone live. Miranda's jumped on here. So she says, I don't want to alarm anyone to take away from the fabulous Jack Daniels, but my parents just saw the Northern Lights and gallipulous ferry, West Virginia. Holy crap. Aurora borealis.
That's sick. I've always wanted to see it. I've never, I've never, I've never seen that before.
Well, I can't see them out my window. That's why I keep looking.
Too much light pollution out here, man. I need to be somewhere dark.
Exactly. Exactly. That's the issue that I'm having because my backyard, actually on a clear night, you can see great stars, but the Dairy Queen that is literally a catty corner to the alley next to my house, uh, keeps these giant halogen lights on all night to prevent people from like bootering around their building and shit. And it's, they're blinding and it sucks and it doesn't allow me to, uh, to see cool shit in the sky.
What I want, what I want JD is a, is a social media account from you that's got the Dairy Queen. It's got this sign, but it's these beautiful photos. It's got, you've got like the Northern Lights above the Dairy Queen one day. You've got the solar eclipse above the Dairy Queen one day. I just want all of these great things, but also in the photo.
You know what y'all are gonna have to do sometime? You're gonna have to come out to Birdland and check out my sauna. If you want a place to get away from the light pollution. I've got a couple of acres out in the, uh, out off of Route 10, then there's, I built a sauna out there after I came back from Finland. I was, uh, I'm at an architect class over there.
Helsinki is all about sauna, right? Sauna.
You can do sauna in the Burger King.
You see how casually Jack Daniels mentions that, by the way? So for all of you that don't know Jack yet, or maybe you're on the, on the wire of who you're going to vote for, just the fact that he just casually throws out, when I got back from Finland, went ahead and bought myself a few acres, built a sauna on it, like, what other guy says, I don't know any other guy that says that. I've always got Jack to say things like that.
Well, we all need to come out and check it out sometimes and have a, have an authentic fit.
Miranda.
Miranda says, say no more, Jack. I will be there.
Welcome.
That sounds great.
Yeah, I've been doing some land management out there too, trying to rewild it. I got a West Virginia wild yard certification for my backyard here in town and I've been slowly replacing all the like invasive ornamentals and stuff with, uh, you know, West Virginia native, uh, flora. And so I've been working on that out at Birdland too, but it's covered with autumn olive and honeysuckle and all this stuff. I have to cut back, so it's, it's going to take years.
All this, all this major invasive stuff that's, that's, yeah, I totally understand.
It's just been building up for years and years.
Land, by the way.
Uh, well, I mean, well, I'm really into birds. I like birds a lot. I like birding. I like identifying birds and, uh, I like, I was in band and, and at Marshall, we played Birdland in, in marching band, in Marching Thunder. And, uh, I like weather report a lot. And also one of the guys that I met, the, the, the hosts of, uh, the Helsinki trip, uh, had a weather report, the weather report album with, they had Birdland on it hanging up like in a frame on his. Hey, that's probably me. That was probably within that.
Yeah, you're going to get a royalty in the mail. You're going to get two cents for us to hit that button.
They already paid the royalties out in stipends.
Ladies and gentlemen, jackforhuntington.com. Jack Daniels running for, uh, council, uh, in Huntington, uh, for district nine. That's Altizer, Guindot, the Crossroads Community, Arlington Park, East Huntington out, uh, and to, um, close to the P Ridge area. But basically if you're on the east side of the city, you're probably around district nine. You're probably traveling through it a couple of times. Um, and you need this guy, uh, to do it. So if you're voting on the Democratic ticket, he will be there in the, in that, uh, district. Definitely vote for this guy. Jackforhuntington.com. Thank you, Jack. Um, we're going to scoot on, uh, because we've got a couple of poll questions we're going to ask. Oh, there we go. Then there's a nice quote on the screen here for.
Heard it here first.
Everyone to see. You heard it here first. I like birds.
I like birds.
Uh, so we're gonna, we're gonna have some fun and answer some poll questions that we put out there. We had some really interesting ones this week, but we're also going to play some family feud. Uh, Brian, what, what should we do next, bro?
Dude, let's, I'll tell you what, let's talk to Holler Nation. They had a lot to say. We, we put some Holler polls out there. Let's have some fun with them first and, uh, we'll go from there. Let me hit a little stab here and scoot us on. Here we go.
Link up at officialholler.com.
Officialholler.com is where you can go and see all of our past episodes. You can download them. You can stream them on any platform or on every plat- platform that's out there. It's awesome. Um, if you'll watch our, our past episodes on YouTube, it's great stuff. Officialholler.com. Brian, why don't you go first with your, your poll question, brother? Cause I think yours had a, had a really good, uh, response for some people and I really liked the way it went.
Yeah, absolutely. So I asked Holler Nation to give me the sexiest product mascot of all time. That's just how I worded it. I want to see where everyone's head goes. Um, so you know, before we get going here with the rest of Holler Nation, let's just maybe go around the table. Sexiest product mascot of all time. I want to hear from everyone else first and then I'll go last. JD, start us out.
The green M and M pre, uh, shoe change.
Wait, did her shoe, her shoes changed?
They changed. She used to wear a nice pair of white high heels and now she just wears sneakers. And it was the heels, man. It was the heels, dude.
Had you looking, had you looking at that little green, little green cakes.
Them little green cakes. Yeah. Green M and M. Pre. Free shoes change.
I don't disagree. Uh, uh, yeah. I don't disagree. Sexy, sexy product mascot for sure.
I am done with you guys.
Gracie, oh yeah, we'll name a sexy product mascot.
The Kool-Aid man.
Oh yeah. What, what about him? Is it his dad bod?
Yeah.
I figured that's what.
And while you bust through the wall, oh my gosh.
He'll fucking crash your party. Literally, he will crash the wall of your party.
Yeah. It's the Kool-Aid man for sure.
Spike him. He can just pour himself like around at the party and get everybody drunk.
Yeah, go ahead, Gracie. I think you're.
In his body. Do you think he's already drunk? What?
He, if you pour vodka into him, does he get drunk? And, and here's the thing, when he pours himself out, is he pouring his blood into your? Is it his blood? Is the Kool-Aid his blood?
It could be both.
I think it's his soul.
He's awful adamant about like pouring his life essence out into other vessels. His whole body design is made to do that.
He's just a giver. He, uh, just don't know what to say about him.
Brian, are you, you said you want to go last, so we got Jack next. Jack, sexiest, uh, product mascot of all time.
Uh, Chester Cheetah, right? He's got the riz, the glasses. Yeah.
Oh my God, dude. I, I saved myself for last so that I can say Chester Cheetah because. That's okay. That's okay. I've got backups. I've got backups, but I've literally had Chester Cheetah start because I'm just like, he is like, he's so, he's so slick. He's smooth. Chester Cheetah is like, actually like Mr. Still Yo Girl. Like he will take it.
And, and with those fingers, like he still pulls it off with the Cheeto fingers. He's got. He's got the dust powder fingers. It's the grossest thing ever, but it doesn't matter. Chester Cheetah, cause he's got it.
Yeah, every, every place he goes to, there's Cheeto dust, uh, similar to, uh, the Kool-Aid man, whose blood spills over. I think, I think people are sleeping on Captain Morgan. Um, he's kind of like a, um, he's a, he's an old pirate. Everybody loves a good drunken pirate, don't they? I mean, Johnny can prove that. So. And if we want to go real life, which I do for a second here, uh, that AT&T girl, right? That's what she's with, right? AT&T.
Right.
He's actually, um, no, not flow.
I think, I think her name is Lily.
Lily, yes.
Guy is basically the Witcher.
Okay, wait. Let three one, cause I have a second. Mr. Peanut? The hat.
Gatsby. He's got some Gatsby-ish.
Gatsby the peanut.
Mr. Peanut's first name is Gatsby. Mr. Gatsby Peanut.
But Gatsby was his last name, right?
Mr. Peanut Gatsby.
Oh, Peanut Gatsby.
First name, I guess.
Gatsby's a good first name for Mr. Peanut. So I'm alright. Mister Peanut has to be his last name. That's just.
Yeah, that's true. You're right.
What has Holler Nation got to say about this?
Go back. I've got something to say.
What?
Jake from State Farm. He's pretty good looking. I like how all of you nodded.
Well, yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, he's, he's definitely got some, got some charisma for sure. But remember there was a Jake before Jake that were the. And that's, if you want to talk dad bod, that guy had it going on.
The OG Jake.
He wore the fuck out of those khakis.
Let's go to Holler Nation and we've got a great first answer from Adam in North Carolina. He says, it's Spot from Seven Up. It's that fucking dot that with. Cool spot. Spot was so cool. And that's where I was going with this. Spot was so cool. He actually had his own game on Sega Genesis. I'll try to show you. I posted this.
Look at how fucking cool he is.
I own this game on Sega Genesis. That's how.
It's a wonderful game. The graphics in that game were actually very, very, uh, ahead of their time, I think.
It was a good game.
And it was based on the character from the soda camp. That's, I mean, come on.
Imagine pitching that idea and it working, by the way.
Confused, I always confused the, the spot with the Noid. They kinda, they kinda lived in the same area of my brain at, I think at the time, but the Noid was definitely a, a little creepy.
Or take a video game with both of them in there. That would be great.
That game, both of those were good. Like you would expect, like we had this like golden era in the nineties of these corporate sponsored games that if, if it happened today, it would not have the same character at all. But for some reason, the Cool Spot game and the Yo Noid game were both like really good. They were good games. I mean, I don't know. It wasn't like a sea of stuff that's available. Chex Quest.
It was basically a Doom, a Doom ripoff. And instead of blood, it was like Alien goo or something and you. Yeah. And it was just a Doom. It was a shooter. It was a first person shooter, but you got it for free in a box of checks.
You got it for free. Unbelievable. Um, we also used to do like celebrity based games that were also really fucking good, by the way. Mike Tyson's Punch-Out. Um, that Michael Jackson game on Sega, Moonwalkers.
Michael Jordan, uh, Chaos in the Windy City. There are a lot of Michael games actually that were really good that had Michaels in them. Uh, Shaq Fu, uh, Barkley Shut Up and Jam. Uh, Barkley Shut Up and Jam Guiden.
Okay, back to Holler Nation. Buffy Six says, the green M and M is a given for sexiest mascot, but I would like to go with the Firefox Fox, the newest mascot. Have you seen her? She is fire. Sophie says, that Geico lizard's voice is what does it for me. Ruby, Ruby Ray Moore says Tony the Tiger.
Oh, yeah.
Cory says, Mr. Clean.
Mr. Clean's buff.
Lee Pennington says, Mr. Clean.
More Mr. Clean.
Miranda says, the brawny man.
The brawny man.
The lumberjack who sells you paper towels from the tree.
The brawny man and her boyfriend can't grow a beard.
Captain Awesome, which is his real name, by the way, says, Mrs. Butterworth, she's thicker than the syrup on the back of the fridge. Brittany, Brittany has a, has an interesting answer. The Jolly Green Giant. I think she's going for like a shoe size thing right there. I think is what she's doing. Brittany Fury.
All the ladies are really liking the buff dudes. That's like, I, it's funny. There's, I mean. Yeah.
I'm seeing all the pictures of the Aurora now.
Oh shit.
Not to derail, but I'm just scrolling and there's tons and tons of pictures of people that saw the Aurora twenty-four minutes ago.
Well, numbers, we'll run directly outside after following the show. That's what we'll do. Um.
Yeah. It should be out there until like one in the morning.
Yeah, I think two actually. Brittany Fury says, Mr. Clean, Bethy Allen, another brawny paper towel guy. Um, I really liked this answer from La Candice. She says, this sexy guy. And it's just, it's just grimace, grimacing all over the place on the screen.
He looks like, it's, he's looked like somebody asked him to twerk and he doesn't know what it means.
Now Grimace also enters the dad bod, uh, chat. So now we've got Grimace and Mr. Kool-Aid fighting it out.
Yeah.
Captain Awesome came back hours later to say, why has nobody mentioned Little Debbie? She got those cakes.
Yeah, so that's, uh.
She was, she is a child. We would have to assume she did become Deborah eventually, but like, I don't know.
It was okay. Yeah.
Why do you wait? Time out. Do you assume she's a child because her name is Little Debbie? Maybe she's.
No, if you look at the photograph.
Listen, I don't look at the photo. I'm just like.
Let's pull up a photo. Then you tell me.
Do we need to call Drake and see if he? I'm in the beef now.
JD has entered the beef.
What do you say? What do you got to say about Little Debbie? That's a little diabetes.
Yeah, that's the wrong one.
Have you seen the one with Michael Jackson's face superimposed on it and it's Lil Deb?
Okay, she was.
Uh-oh. That's what the Drake versus Kendrick thing is all about so that we stop thinking about Diddy. Holy shit, I blew the lid off the fucker.
Yeah, we are distracting the nation right now from what really matters, which is, yeah. Yeah, uh, Tom, back to Holler Nation. Tom says, it's Flo. Flo's the sexiest product mascot. Um, Big Scott Collard out of Kentucky, uh, one of our Holler Boys Shotgun Squad, former Shotgun Squad out of Kentucky.
Oh, yeah.
Um, he says, the brawny paper towel guy. Brawny is winning. Let's pause, let's pause right here. Uh, I came in, I came in as Holler Live and I said, like this comment if you would fuck Reptar. Uh, Reptar from Rugrats on Reptar cereal box.
I wanted that cereal so bad.
It did receive one like and it is Brittany. Uh, Brittany, who commented earlier on the Jolly Green Giant, she would also fuck Reptar.
She's got a thing for green, for green.
That's exactly right. Yeah. She is down for the green. Yeah. Um, Holly says, Mr. Peanut. And I said, oh, you're a sucker for the cane. And she said, no, it's the no clothes on Peanut.
And he's got, he's got a pretty, uh, he's got a dunk.
He really does just strut out there all shell. He's got the shell just out.
Wait a second. Is the shell the clothes? Is the shell the clothes and the peanuts inside of the shell or him?
He has a pimp cane.
Yeah, these are, we're asking the hard hitting.
The monocle, the pimp cane, the top hat? Fuck yeah, Mr. Peanut.
I think he has, does he have shoes and socks on?
Yes.
Socks on, yes.
Maybe the shell is his clothes. Maybe his body or the nuts.
He's basically stick figure arm and leg, isn't he? Uh, whatever. We'll go ahead and say.
He's an hourglass nude man in a, with a cane and a hat.
The weird thing is that he actually has like a full backstory and stuff. Cause like the Mr. Peanut people did like a story arc with him where he died and then came back alive or something.
Sega Genesis game.
Want to repeat, I want to, I want to make sure everybody knows this. Mr. Peanut died in came to life for your sins. Alright?
You're going straight to hell.
No, he doesn't have, they're not stick figures. It's, those are bowling shoes, by the way. Gloves. Uh, leggings maybe? He's probably wearing leggings.
Oh, he's got knights. So I guess the shell is an outer layer of some sort.
Said that, the shell, it's shell is his clothes and his little body is the nuts.
If Mr. Peanut had a wife, her name would be Shelley.
We got mail.
Oh man, this has been a great question for Holler Nation, man. I really like this. And we've been getting into the lore of these, of these mascots. I like it.
Yeah.
It's good stuff.
No doubt. Um, well, that's everything with Holler Nation on sexiest product mascot. So there you have it.
If you guys, uh, out there in the chat, still think of anything, just pop it up on the, and we'll put, bring it up on the screen and we'll share it with everybody. Also Holler Chat, uh, you know, take a screenshot, send it, it, send it to us with your information. We'll send you some free camo energy. Go to camo dot energy for more information about them. And also hit up, uh, jackforhuntington.com. Uh, Brian, do we got some people in the chat that might want to play feud or do we want to wait a little bit or what's up?
Nah, we'll, we'll keep hanging right now. So, uh, we, we've got an option here. We can either fire some shots or we can go to your poll. I'll let you choose.
Ooh, we haven't fired some shots in.
You're exactly right. We have not.
Let's do, let's fire some shots, then we'll do the poll a little bit later. Well, I've, uh, I'm sure, I'm sure somebody's got a good reason to get some things off their chest. This is Shots Fire. This is where we fire shots against stuff while we do shots of stuff. Um, if you've got one with you, uh, drink along with us. If you don't, uh, it's fine. Water's good too for your health. It's really, really good stuff. Uh, Miranda says, by the way, has another answer for sexiest, uh, product mascot. That's Brian Ball for camo energy.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, horned, horned Brian Ball camo energy. Ooh, let me show you a couple of other flavors, by the way. I showed you Blood Orange and Rocket Pop. Here's another couple that are delicious. Check this out. Dragon Fruit. Um, is this one and Berry Blast on this one. And these are all delicious. Um, you know what's cool about these? I like knocking these down. I drink one daily. Everybody that knows me knows this. Um, I like knocking down an energy shot as, as compared to just chugging a full ass energy drink and feeling so full and bloated afterwards. So energy shots are great. But anyway, Shots Fire JD, uh, it's yours, man.
Uh, my shots fired this week is, it can be, uh, this is a microcosm of the real issue that's going on in the entire fucking world. And that's just everything's so fucking expensive. But what my shots fired is, is that fast food is now not fast and cheap. It is, it's barely fast now. It's definitely not cheap. And you can actually spend the same amount of money at a mom and pop restaurant as you would go through and drive through. And even the drive-through, you go through there and you miss, you're missing parts of your order of all, all that kind of stuff. But the real thing that's rubbing me fucking wrong is that each of these companies still offer those, remember how it was cheap? It's still that cheap. However, you have to get a fucking app, log in with it, create an account. Uh, consent to giving them all this data about you so that they can sell that data to, uh, ad companies. Just so you can get your burger cheaper. And I think it's very ridiculous. They, they literally, there's, but they're telling you is, yeah, we could charge you less for the burger. Anytime we wanted to, we just choose not to because it lines the fucking, uh, pockets of these fucking assholes. So I think it's bullshit that you have to download an app to get a burger that you got a year ago for half the price that now this year uh, is twice the price and you, for, for you to get it, it's the same burger too. It's not better. It's not bigger. It's not tastier.
Smaller and worse.
It's smaller actually now, shrinkflation, right? So, but that, that basically my shots fired is for these damn companies that know they can charge us less and choose not to, fuck you guys. Um, you're fucking going down. It's gonna happen. You're gonna go, you're, you're gonna go down. We're gonna fucking tear you down. So fuck that. Cheers.
Agreed dude about the high prices. It's like they jacked the prices up so high and they'll gladly take that jacked up price. Or you can consent to all the bullshit and then we'll knock it back down to the normal price ish. And still at the end of the day, like you said, JD, if you do go for a burger and fries and what, and a drink. At the end of the day, you're really paying the same damn price to go down the road to a mom and pop and get yourself a burger and fries. The only thing that you're missing would just be the tip. And guess what? If all you're getting is a burger and fries legitimately, then your tip is small at the mom and pop place anyway. So just go get the better product and support your local community. Uh, but most importantly.
Here, here. Here, here. I like it. That's the right answer right there. Uh, uh, Brian, you next bud?
Sure.
You got something to get off your chest?
Yeah, yeah. I, you know, I, I hate the fact that people choose to be as polarized as they are on subjects. And I'm purposely firing this shot because we have Jack here and he's running for something. Um, I, I just wish everybody could get on the same page and listen to each other. I hate the fact that we cancel each other or we cancel people in general. We don't listen to everything that everyone has to say. And, and so like, let's just say one person says something that you disagree with, like it's a view. Instead of having a, a, a proper debate, like a civilized culture, which we are, by the way, instead of that, uh, the, the, the cancel culture tends to come in and say, uh, you know, fuck this person altogether because I disagree with that one view. They're a Nazi. They're a racist. They go to the, the most extreme thing they can say. They don't mean that. They don't mean that the person is a Nazi, a literal Nazi. That's absurd. Or, you know, most of the time they don't mean that the person's an actual racist, but they know if they say things like that, they can tear the person and their views down. And, you know, we need to get back to, to hearing everyone out. And it's actually a good thing to debate, by the way. It's a good thing to have differing opinions and to come to agreement. If we stop listening to all. It's a good thing to have differing opinions and to come to agreement. If we stop listening to all the sides, we're never going to have the best possible turnaround. Um, by the way, Serge taking it now. That was, that was his stretch after.
Hell yeah, dog. Truth, brother.
This is what Serge was doing.
Oh, he opened his mouth right when he hit that button. That's amazing. It's like he did it for real.
Let's not be polarized. Let's, let's debate like a civilized culture. Okay, shots fired.
And just to add to that, uh, being pro peace for Palestine does not mean you're an anti semi. That's, that's it. It's only one, that's one sentence for you. One, one sentence. That's all you need to know. Gracie, I know you're pissed about some shit. What's up?
Okay, so here we go. So I like to listen to the radio in the mornings, just drive and listen to the radio. And this commercial comes on about like TikTok and all these social medias. And it's like parents, you, it's like talking bad about social media. And yeah, social media sucks, but like, watch what your kid's doing on their phone. Don't give them a phone until they're old enough to be responsible on it. Like I don't let Moria play certain games because I don't want her talking with people older than she is. Watch what your kids do. Don't blame social media for what your kids see because you should be watching what they're doing. And it just makes me crazy because you need to be a responsible parent. I think maybe that's it. Like be a responsible parent, watch what your kid's doing. Like my child is not allowed in her room with her tablet or her switch because I, she's not, I don't want something weird to happen. So be a responsible parent, watch what your kid's doing. Stop blaming other people. That's it. That's my shots fired.
Social media isn't going anywhere.
Alaska, sorry.
Instead, instead of trying to block your, your child from it and, and pretend it doesn't exist, it's not going anywhere. So like you say, police it better and, you know, uh, show your child the way through this obstacle, uh, the, the maze of it, the, the ins and outs, the good and bad. Why, why cancel it and be like, no, you know, cause you're gonna hurt the kid in the end. They gotta be exposed to all these things. Good shots fired, Gracie. I like that. Hey, we got Mel in the house. Mel coming in from Alaska, by the way. Mel, so good to see you. We missed your face.
Do you suppose that, do you suppose that, uh, this is, could be some sort of a whiplash effect from the whole helicopter parent concept that people talked about years ago, um, that now parents are so hands off with their kids that they, that the tablet is the babysitter now. And it wasn't like that before. It was ju- just before kids started using them and, and essentially now they have to, especially if they go to school. Almost all public school systems utilize some form of tablet or computer that's actually issued to every student. Um, I know that happens here in, in, in this county and, uh, and other ones surrounding, but it's, you think it's like, I mean, Jack, you've got, you've got some kids. Um,
Yeah.
Do you feel like this could be a, it's a whiplash? It's almost like a, uh, uh, now that they're not helicopter parents at all. Now they're just, uh, whatever, uh, they, I give them the tablet so they shut up, you know?
I mean, I think there's still, we still definitely have helicopter parents and, and it's sad that our cities are designed now in a way that sort of isolate everybody. If you live in suburbia, then if you're a child in suburbia, there's really nothing that you can do or anywhere you can go. Uh, if you don't know some, an, an immediate neighbor that you can walk to, you know, within a reasonable distance, then there's nothing for you to do other than be on a device all day long. Unless you, maybe you have a, a small yard outside or something like that. But
Right.
You, you're not going to be able to walk through your town or ride your bike through your town and actually go to anywhere meaningful. If you, um, you know, you would have to bike for miles. And this is, this applies to anywhere in North America, not just, not just, uh, you know, here.
A sprawling city or around here or anything. Yeah.
Yeah, the, the, you know, suburbanization, uh, white flight inflation polarization, all those things kind of tie together, you know? And there's, there's a, a bigger struggle at play that's sort of, uh, you know, the way that the country that is, that we built, that our ancestors built, I guess, does not really serve our needs anymore. In this age that we're in now, I feel like we're kind of at a crossroads where we, we have to decide what the new America is going to look like, like what our kids' generation is gonna have to deal with and have to work with. So we need to be focused on, you know, mitigating climate change and fixing our infrastructure so that, uh, you know, people can get around and don't necessarily have to have a car or, uh, you know, if they still are enthusiasts and want their car, I don't want to take anybody's car away from them.
Of course, yeah.
You know, we can design things better so that, you know, children, I mean, that's, that's one thing. People always forget about the children and their infrastructure needs. Like I would love it if my child could just, if I could just say, yeah, go to, go walk to the cemetery or to, to school or something like that. And if our, if our streets were designed well, then they could do that almost without any supervision from me whatsoever. So that sort of tackles your helicopter parent thing, right? Um, it's, I, I, I have to get in a car and drive my kids to school and they live less than a half a mile each from me, but the roads are not safe to walk on.
Yeah.
You know, and that's just sort of a, an, an issue with our neighborhoods.
I'm so, uh, glad that you tied, uh, Gracie shots fired back to things that you actually are extremely interested in and when it comes to governance, that's super awesome. That's great. Uh, you make a fine politician, bud. Miranda, uh, she's like, she's got all those shots fired for us. She says that she'd like her shots fired. Not that anyone cares, but they do. Miranda, come on, uh,
I care.
Her shots fired is people that reply all to company wide emails.
Yes.
Then you have the people who reply all to say, please stop replying all and it goes on.
An endless fucking chain.
Especially good shots fired.
It's a great shots fire. I'm gonna, I might actually give her a button for that. Yeah.
Careful bud, uh.
Hey, by the way, by the way, we've got Mel, uh, in here from Alaska and I'm curious, Mel, if you're still in here, if you could like chat with us for a second. You are really primed to see the northern lights, I feel like right now tonight. So like.
Well, that's what's interesting. I looked actually at a map of where it's gonna be going.
Going further now?
And there's a, because of the way that the ma- geo, the magnetic storm is and the way it, where the sun is in relation to the earth at the present time, uh, it looks like it's more, you're more likely to see it more south than you are up north. Cause what I've at least, uh, seen on that, the factor is higher down south because of the way it, everything just kind of court, uh, coordinated itself. But so Jack, uh, they, that was an awesome response to Gracie's shots fired, but you still get one, man. Is there something uh, that's been going on with you or in your life that's kind of ticked you off a little bit? You wanna, you wanna fire some shots at?
Oh, man, you know, I've been trying to, uh, uh, I don't know, not, not manifest anger about stuff lately, but you know.
The negative energy is bad. We get that, but that's why we do this is we, this is our segment on the show to be able to let some steam off about something. And it can be silly as well.
I'm, I, I, I'm sure if you, uh, caught me while I was in the middle of a Rocket League stream, I'd have plenty of things to curse about. So I guess my shots fired is, uh, my teammates not rotate, rotating the back post in Rocket League.
That's good. Yeah, you gotta, you know, you gotta, you gotta, you gotta listen, man. You gotta set the shot up right in Rocket League. You know, you gotta, you gotta conserve your boosts. You gotta know, you gotta know when to flip them and know when to dip them. You know what I'm saying?
That's, I know.
That was a fun little time there. We, uh, we had a shots fired, uh, fantastic. Um, very, very good. We got one little last one here from Dewey. Says shots fired, having no infrastructure for the massive layoffs, uh, uh, major corporations are making. Huh? There you go. Hey, man, uh, it's hitting home. It's starting to hit home for people, dude. And, uh, you, we got, we have to have something to help. These are people, these are families. They're not just.
I was caught up in it.
Yeah.
I got laid off from my job, my remote job.
Wow.
My, my last day was just last week actually. So I'm a, I'm a, a, a full-time public servant for the time being.
Okay.
We're sorry. You have reached a number that has been disconnected or is no longer in service.
Yeah, the tech industry is just like slashing and burning right now. I mean, there's still, the la- the, the rate of layoffs has slowed down a little bit, but I mean, it's been thousands and thousands of people.
I mean, this is, it's crazy, man. Again, these are people, these are families, these are people with children. These are people that have people that depend on them. These are people that take care of other people and they're not just numbers on a screen. They're not just a means for shareholders to make money. But that's unfortunately what unfettered capitalism is in this fucking country. And I'm on my soapbox now. I apologize. Mel. He says, uh, uh, we can normally see this northern lights pretty good in Prudhoe Bay and they are gorgeous. I'd figure Mel, you get to see it all the time. I mean, that are the, you're, you're basically at the edge of the Arctic Circle. So.
It's so cool. It's so cool.
That's awesome.
That's where I'd figure the clearest nights are and the prettiest stuff. And that stuff's magical, man. It's crazy shit. And we do need to, uh, eat the, eat the rich.
Danger.
Uh, all right. So, um, we're going to scooch on, I guess, and move forward. I got another, um, I got another poll here that I put up and this one's actually going to be kind of fun. We had, we had some fun with the last one. It was fantastic. And this one's going to be a little more in this, uh, in this, uh, sort of zone. And what I'm going to do is, uh, read out the question, give out Holler Nation's answers, then we'll go around the table, say our piece. We'll hit some other stuff and then we'll be done for the show this evening. Does that sound good for everybody?
Sounds good, man. Let's do it.
Yeah. Snowman hanging with the snowman.
So, uh, I asked, uh, what scientific breakthrough are we closer to than most people realize? Now, I know it's an interesting sort of question, but what is something that's going to, that we can tell is probably going to happen very soon. It's a big breakthrough in science or technology or just anything that has to do with human or culture or anything like that. Um, got some really cool answers here and I, I, I like the hope, the hopeful outs, outlook of what's going on. I think that's really great. Uh, so like keep that up, Holler Nation, you're doing awesome. This one comes from Brittany. She says, uh, a scientific breakthrough we are closer to than most people realize is curing cancer. Um, if we could just use our fucking sense to clean up our food and our food systems, um, utilize stem cells properly and not, uh, have it be tied up in government red tape. I guarantee that we could get that shit taken care of sooner than we realized. Also reduce our use of plastics, motherfuckers. That shit goes right in the ocean and then it enters your bloodstream. It has nowhere else to go, everybody.
We're all the Kool-Aid man. Just think of it that way.
Just think of it that way. Uh, La Candace, uh, this, this is a really good one. Um, being able to have fu- a fully functional life on another planet besides Earth, including humans, plants, vegetation, animals. Um, yes, uh, I'm going to circle back around to that after we go, I'm actually come stay a little, sa- state a little something, uh, that, that's gonna be great. Brian, you're gonna love my, my part on this one. But I'm gonna keep going here. Uh, Big Scott says creating body parts, I'm assuming in a lab. So there won't be any need for organ donors, more organ donations. Uh, but also that there will be, uh, you know, that will really also believe is the lists, the waiting lists of all these people that need the organs that we can't, that we don't have the stock. If we can grow those things, we can save a lot of lives and that's awesome. And it is happening, people. It's happening. They're growing the shit in labs. It's being tested right now. Um, and this one right here, uh, this one's from been awesome. Um, so you know where it's gonna go. Uh, using autologists genetically engineered T cells to incorporate T cell antigen coupler receptors that recognize human epidermal growth factor receptor two presence on tumor cells to remove them from metastatic HER2 positive solid.
What?
That's what.
Speak English, doc. Hey, scientists. Okay.
So yeah, thanks Captain Awesome for that answer. To the question. Lil John's really confused.
Okay.
Oh no, now he's got it. No, he figured it out. He was.
He got it.
It took him a minute.
That's good shit.
Miranda says Captain Awesome stole her answer so she couldn't put it out.
Of course, of course. So, all right. So Brian, I want you to start. And then we'll go around the table and end with me because I got a really cool thing that I'm going to circle around to. But what scientific breakthrough are we be closer to than most people realize, Brian?
Uh, land.
And you work in sports medicine, by the way. I want to let, remind everybody that Brian's served the thought orthopedic thither. So he knows some shit and it's probably going to have to deal with that.
Um, landing a human on the moon.
Damn it. That was the thing I was circling around.
I just wanted to see everyone's face for saying it. That's all I wanted to do. My real answer, to be completely honest, I think that what we are, I liked everyone's answers out there. I think some are a little bit further away than, you know, uh, what I would hope. Hell, I hope it happens, man, that some of those things you read, especially that Captain Awesome shit, whatever that was. But, um, whatever happened there. But no, I think the thing that we're closest to the breakthrough would be the first person to live to age 150. I think in our lifetime, we're going to see a human hit 150. I truly do believe that. Um, we're, we're just inching closer and closer. You know, 40 is the new 30 and it's even like the new 26, I would even argue almost. It's crazy.
Yeah, yeah. That's a interesting man. It could happen. I mean, the oldest people record is being broken all the time, right? The oldest person record is kind of always, always happening. So that's where I, that's a good deal. Uh, Gracie, any sort of scientific breakthrough, uh?
It's gonna be a nightmare for insurance companies, by the way, when that happens. They're gonna have to really.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Fuck insurance companies anyway.
Exactly.
Um, dinosaurs.
Just.
Question mark. Dinosaurs question mark.
Maybe like bringing dinosaurs back like Jurassic Park style.
Jurassic Park.
Except maybe not.
So have you seen, have you seen them film Jurassic Park though? It's a, it's meant to be a parable about not wanting to do that.
But I want to do that.
Okay.
I just want a baby dinosaur.
Yeah, that's what would happen. A cute baby.
Begins eating. Okay, maybe. You know what? Can I spin your answer a little bit to actually make it again more hopeful for real stuff? How about the ability to use, uh, genetics and things like CRISPR to be able to possibly help save an endangered species from going extinct?
Ooh, that's the good one.
Yeah.
You know, that's kind of a good idea. Cause dinosaurs, again, Dr. Ian Malcolm says, uh, dinosaurs had their chance. Uh, and nature selected them to be, to be taken off of the planet for a reason. There's a, there's a, and the, the dinosaurs had their chance and, and they're gone for a reason. Anyway, blah, 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 blah.
Crisp and gloves.
CRISPR, CRISPR glove.
Of CRISPR Industries.
You're CRISPR. Y'all reminded me of the, uh, the Talladega Nights. Uh, where he says, he says he thinks he can live to 245, 300 maybe. Advance, there's a modern science and my high level of income. I mean, it's not crazy to think I can't live to be 245, 300 maybe.
Uh, Jack, you got, is there some, something you see happening soon scientifically that's going to, that people might not realize how close we are to?
Yeah, I think y'all hit on a lot of the stuff. I mean, I, I think that, uh, the James Webb telescope, we're seeing, we're just having such a huge flood of stuff about space that's blowing our minds constantly. So I think that we're gonna hear uh, something, uh, space related before too long. Either it's, you know, confirmed life on another planet, whether it's like bacterial microorganisms, things like that, or, uh, you know. Yeah, yeah, see monkey stuff. But I mean, we are, we might also find intelligent life, honestly. I mean.
Yeah, Dewey looks like he's agreeing with you. He thinks that something we're close to, most people realize is freaking aliens, dude. What the heck? We're talking about it like it's nothing. It's true.
Lately, we have, uh, yeah.
Probably, probably we'll discover like what black, uh, what dark matter is maybe hopefully that would be cool.
Yeah, or, or what.
Or like what a black hole leads to, that would be super cool.
Right, right. And what's, what, maybe, maybe with.
That's my answer.
The power of James Webb's telescope, uh, in the, in the way that we can process using AI, the way that we can process the data we receive from stuff like that. It's possible we can peer into one of those things and actually see around it, around our event horizon. That'd be crazy. Um, one thing that's going down, it's actually happening that, uh, NASA actually released a really awesome video on YouTube about is the Artemis two mission. Um, we have, we've moved on from Artemis one. Artemis is now is the next, essentially the next moon landing. Um, and it's going to be a big deal because we are sending people up there now to the moon and the Artemis two mission to establish a moon base as, as a, as a stop point on our way to Mars. So people are not realizing a very soon thing will be in a, in, I believe, not just in our lifetime, but probably in a few years.
Yeah.
We're going to be able to s- to set a human foot on the, on the planet surface of Mars. That's fucking insane.
Yeah.
And we're going to be using the moon to shoot off to it.
Right.
That's fucking nuts.
I'm Brian Fellow. That's crazy. That's crazy.
I mean,
That's crazy.
I, I, I am super fascinated by it. Like I, I'm, I'm a huge space nerd, so it's. I, I, I am super fascinated by it. Like I, I'm, I'm a huge space nerd. So it's, I, I always love to, to hear the updates on it and stuff. So the concept of there being like a ga- the, the moon being like the earth's gas station just kind of cracks me up a little bit though.
It is kind of funny.
It's very earthworm gym, right? Like, stop, get gas in the moon.
Another banger, by the way.
Yeah. Borderlands type vibes. It's just, I don't know.
I like it. I like it.
I just imagine the, uh, giant flying Jay son on the moon.
Just stuck on the moon. Or like the moon is, the moon's up there and it's got just a little stick coming out of it with the sun on top and it's flashing. Gas prices.
Definitely a Dollar General for sure. First thing going up.
Oh, yeah.
That's funny. Um, Captain replied to me and he dumbed down his comment for us. If you want to hear about it.
Yeah. What did he say? Do you have it?
They're gonna find a cure, um, the cure for metastatic breast cancer, which is, uh, death sentence. So.
Amazing.
We just crossed. I hope so.
Amazing. Dewey says he feels like we're pretty close to being in space like in the expanse. Ooh, I don't know if that would be a good thing for us. You know, a major element of, uh, when they created interstellar travel and the expanses, uh, the guy who, wasn't it the guy who invented the drive? Uh, you, you, you can't know where you're gonna go. Like you can do it and you can achieve the ability to travel spe- faster than the speed of light. And it's because you're basically crumbling space into a ball and pulling it back apart and like, oh, uh, yeah, I've traveled faster than the speed of light, but I am now lost in space.
Why space cold if sun hot?
Exactly.
Who knows?
My brain gets pretty melted quickly when we start talking about spacetime and mending space and all that stuff. It just like, uh, and then, then the math comes in and, uh,
Fuck.
Yeah.
I guess the answer to that question would be if you're, if you can't, if you're not directly in the rays of the sun, it is cold. But once you are in the path of the, of the radiation from the sun, it is actually extremely hot and you are cooked alive.
Yeah. And by the way,
Without the, without the protection of the ozone layer on top.
Yeah, yeah. And I think something people don't think about is, uh, how hot the moon actually is, by the way, like, you know?
Really?
I felt like we could have polled Gracie before I said those words and been like, Gracie, what's temperature on the moon? She'd been like, it's fucking freezing. It's like negative 60. And guess what? It's like 250 degrees. You like cook you alive.
Yeah.
Wow.
That's, I think, uh, way higher than that, actually. I think it's more in.
I'm about to Google it. I need to know.
I wonder how they kept the suits cool enough.
The moon is in a tidal lock with the rotation of the earth. So if you were actually always on the dark side of the moon, it would be very cold.
Gracie's got an answer for us.
The temperature near the moon's equator can spike to 250 degrees Fahrenheit in the daylight. Then plummet after nightfall to negative 208 degrees Fahrenheit.
Oh.
The calm down moon. All these mood swings. My God. Who called it mood swings and not moon swings?
Um, here we go. The moon scientists have studied a cavern on a lunar surface and discovered that part of it has a pleasantly cool temperature of 63 degrees Fahrenheit.
Wow.
That's what I set my thermostat to, baby. That's how I sleep.
Wait, a cat, hold on. A cavern on the moon? That's a cool concept. Like I always think of the moons as just being like craters and stuff, but I didn't really thought about there being a
Cave systems.
A cave that you could go into.
Vote for me. I will cover the moon in dandelions and also those helicopter seeds that float around.
If you would have told me, I still would have been right about the temperature of the moon. So, ha.
Oh, oh, huh.
Buddy.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, that's the ba ba da da. That's the show. Uh, we want to thank Camo Energy for sponsoring us. 250 milligrams of caffeine, no carbs, no sugar, no calories, all good shit. Uh, no tropics, all that good stuff. Camo dot energy. If you want to check it out. And if you're still watching us now, take a screenshot, send it to us on Facebook and we will send you some free camo.
No doubt.
Um, thank you so much to Jack Daniels, uh, for your delicious old number seven whiskey. And, uh, also thank you for, for, uh, for all the stuff you've done for the city of Huntington, man, and for your services, as a public servant, and we're, we're excited for you. And we, we want everyone, uh, to know that Holler endorses Jack Daniels for District Nine, City Council in Huntington. If you're on the Democratic primary ticket and you're, but you're using that to vote this Tuesday, May 14th, make sure you go vote. By the way, that's the real deal. Go vote. Voting is one of the things that you're, uh, you know, it, it really is a privilege to do. So go exercise that right. Um, and, uh, and go vote this coming Tuesday. If you're unaffiliated or independent, make sure you ask for the Democratic ballot and vote for Jack Daniels. Uh, his name will be there. Well, your name be on the ballot as Jack or John, or will it be John?
Jack. It'll be Jack Daniels. Jack's got your back. It'll be easy to find it.
Easy to find. You can't really forget it. It's a very, it's a name everybody should really know.
Absolutely.
Jackforhuntington.com.
I think you're gonna steal votes just on the name, dude. I'm dead serious.
I hope so.
Um, so by the way, Jack, this is hilarious, but also, uh, I, this is our promise to you. We're gonna use our holler platform, the page that we put, our main holler page, you know, we, we do all the live videos on this page, but we have a holler page where we post daily. We're gonna use that platform with over 10,000 followers and we are gonna post an official, we, we endorse Jack Daniels and we're gonna, we're gonna get your name up here before they go to the polls. We'll, we'll get it out there close to time. So make sure you repost us when we do that.
I will.
It's our promise.
I will. That's so cool. Thank y'all for, uh, hosting and let, letting me be here and, uh, you know, speak about my plans for the city and just my experiences and stuff. It's, it's been super fun. So really.
Make a fart noise. Make a fart noise. And there you have it.
And there you have.
Oh, I gotta get one more thing. You know, obviously we're, we're, if whoever's listening right now still, you, you guys are awesome. We love you. You're also a crazy person for still listening, but check this out. You might not be able to see the screen if you're listening on Spotify. Um, but boom, I like birds. Jack Daniels is back. And that right there is how we're gonna end the show. I'm gonna smash a bunch of buttons. We're gonna get the hell out of here. Jack, you were an amazing guest. Uh, how about this? Win your primary and then we're gonna come back and run an episode two closer to the second round of voting later in the year. And we will talk all about bending spacetime. It's what the whole thing will be about. We'll get back to the moon. Um, until then, uh, good luck, brother. We endorse you. We will send our, our post and I'm gonna smash a bunch of buttons. We will see you guys next round.
Thank you.
What?